Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the clerk to do roll call.
Counselor Tej.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Vega.
Here.
Counselor Tenary Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Saniget.
Here.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera is absent. Counselor DeJesus.
Present.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Coopero.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Here.
And Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Ten members present, one absent. You have a call.
Great. Next order of business?
We have memoriam and celebratory resolutions. We have a resolution introduced by Council President DeJesus for National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Whereas human trafficking, including both forced labor and sex trafficking, not only represents a threat to international peace and security, but also undermines the rule of law, robs millions of their dignity and freedom, enriches transnational criminals and terrorists, and threatens public safety and national security everywhere. And whereas there are an estimated 27.6 million people, adults and children, currently subjected to human trafficking around the world, including in the United States. And whereas human trafficking disproportionately impacts racial and ethnic minorities, women and girls, LGBTQI+ individuals, vulnerable migrants, and other historically marginalized and underserved communities, requiring that the mission to combat human trafficking always be connected to broader effort to advance equity and justice across our society. And whereas more than 20 years ago, the Trafficking Victims Protection Act of 2000 enshrined the United States' commitment to combating human trafficking domestically and internationally. And whereas in 2010, President Barack Obama issued a proclamation declaring January National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And every year since, each president has followed that tradition. And whereas today, there are 178 parties to the United Nations Protocol to Prevent, Suppress, and Punish Trafficking in Persons. And whereas despite the nearly worldwide adoption of international and domestic norms to address and prevent human trafficking, we continue to witness traffickers exploit people in the United States and around the world. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council recognizes January 2024 as National Human Trafficking Prevention Month in the city of Chelsea. Calls upon all businesses, community-based organizations, communities of faith, families, and all residents to recognize the vital role we play in combating human trafficking and affirm our commitment to protect and empower survivors of all forms of human trafficking as we strive to bring an end to human trafficking in the United States and around the world.
Thank you. Does any, does anyone wish to speak?
Well, I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion or adopt under suspension, Mr. Presi- Mrs. President?
Motion to adopt.
I'd like to speak real briefly.
Chair recognizes Brown.
Thank you. It's just, again, thank you for bringing this resolution to us today. Again, January is a great month that we get, come aware of this. Also, we not only come aware of it, but we also observe it to do our diligently to support businesses, to make them aware of it. And also, we do all we can as elected officials to make sure that this is not going on in our community. If we know someone or we know something, someone is having a problem with that, we try to offer resources and a service that we need to prevent this here. So I'm glad that we're, again, speaking on this here. Every time we get an opportunity, we should make sure that those just in, you know, trapped situation and in horrible situations, that there are people that care for them, but we just need to know so we can offer resources and help. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, moving on.
Next, we have a resolution introduced by Council President DeJesus and all members of the City Council for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Whereas Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. was born January 15, 1929, in Atlanta, Georgia, attended segregated public schools in Georgia before attending Morehouse College. And whereas in February 1948, Dr. King was ordained in the Christian ministry and became assistant pastor of Ebenezer Baptist Church in Atlanta. And whereas while pursuing a doctorate of philosophy degree in theology at Boston University, Dr. King met Coretta Scott, a fellow civil rights activist, and they married on June 18, 1953, later having two sons and two daughters. And whereas after serving as pastor of Dexter Avenue Baptist Church in Montgomery, Alabama, for five years, Dr. King moved back to Atlanta to lead the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, later serving as co-pastor at Ebenezer Baptist Church from 1960 until his death. And whereas Dr. King led the Montgomery Bus Boycott for 381 days to protest the arrest of Rosa Parks and the segregation of the bus system, during which time he was arrested and his home bombed. And whereas on August 28, 1963, Dr. King led the March on Washington DC, during which from the steps of the Lincoln Memorial and before a crowd of more than 200,000 people, he delivered his famous "I Have a Dream" speech. And whereas between 1957 and 1968, Dr. King traveled more than 6 million miles, spoke more than 2,500 times, wrote numerous books and articles supporting efforts around the United States to end segregation and injustice, and was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in 1964. And whereas on April 4, 1968, while preparing to leave sanitation workers in protest against low wages and intolerable working conditions, Dr. King was assassinated while standing on a balcony of his motel room in Memphis, Tennessee. And whereas Dr. King dedicated his life to securing the fundamental principles of justice and liberty for all, preaching a doctrine of nonviolence and civil disobedience to combat discrimination, racial injustice, and segregation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council recognizes January 15, 2024, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the city of Chelsea, and pledges to advance the legacy of Dr. King so that, as he hoped, one day this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident that all men are created equal.
Thank you, clerk. Chair recognizes Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. Adopt under suspension, please. I'd like to speak on it briefly.
Chair recognizes Brown.
Thank you. Again, this is another great resolution that we recognize every January. As you know, his birthday will be coming up, and we will be having events here in the city of Chelsea. I was with the CBC President today. She stated that they'll be having the event this Monday coming out, so we encourage our community to go out and support this day of service, a day of recognition, and also a day of hope. Dr. Kri- Dr. King's motto is, you know, have a dream. If you have a dream, you can reach it, but you have to have it. So let us keep continuing to dream about what we should be doing, and also our family members, what they could do to accomplish things. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Does anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one, we're going to move on to the next order of business.
Next order of business, we have public speaking.
Anyone here for public speaking? Okay, moving on to the next item.
Next, we have approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting dated December 18, 2023.
Chair recognizes Brown.
Thank you. Accept and file the minutes under suspension, Madam President.
Chair recognizes Counselor Brown, accept and file under suspension.
Next, we have approval of the minutes of the special meeting of the Chelsea City Council dated December 21, 2023.
Chair recognizes Counselor Taylor.
Accept and file the minutes under suspension. If there's no objections.
Seeing no objections. On to the next order of business.
We move on to communications from the city manager. We have a copy of a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese requesting appointments to boards and commissions. Dear councilors, pursuant to Section 4-2 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. For appointment to the Community Preservation Committee, Ms. Devra Sarizabat of Chelsea, to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Jonathan Gomez Pereira, who is now a school committee member. This term expires June 30, 2024. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment.
Accept and file the communication under suspension. If there's no objections.
Chair recognizes Counselor Taylor, accept and file. Move to a second reading.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese requesting approval of salary for exempt employees. Dear councilors, I am writing to request approval of a 4.0% salary increase for exempt employees for fiscal year 2024. Exempt employees are those employees who work in city government who are not covered by collective bargaining agreements. At present, we have 25 employees in this category. Most of these employees are department heads or persons who work in confidential positions, such as the city manager's office, the city solicitor's office, and/or the human resources department. You have previously approved 4.0% salary increases in FY '24 for the steelworkers union. This is the group of middle managers in the city who typically work directly under our department heads. This increase of 4% for exempt employees will simply allow their salaries to keep pace with their union managers. The total cost for this increase is fiscal year '24 is $89,828. For the above reasons, I ask the City Council to approve a transfer from the salary reserve to the appropriate individual salary accounts to accommodate this increase. A copy of the order is attached.
Do I hear a motion on?
Madam President, I move to accept and file the communication under suspension. If there's no objections, something coming up under new business.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese requesting approval of union contract with AFSCME Local 708. Dear councilors, pursuant to Section 4-3L of the city charter, I am writing to request City Council's approval-
Madam President, I move that we waive the rest of the reading and accept and file the communication under suspension. If there's no objections, something coming up under new business.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese requesting acceptance of the Nature Conservancy grant to the city of Chelsea. Dear councilors, I am writing to request the necessary council action to formally accept a grant award of $215,000 from the Nature Conservancy for the Mill Creek-
Madam President, I move to waive the rest of the reading and accept and file the communication under suspension. If there's no objections, something coming up under new business.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese requesting supplemental funds for Chelsea Public Schools cafeteria project. Dear councilors, I am writing to request that the City Council approve four financial transfers and an appropriation from reserves in order to cover the projected cost of the comprehensive Chelsea High School cafeteria expansion renovation project. In total, the project cost projection request requires $2,665,697.
Madam President, I move to waive the rest of the reading and move to accept and file the communication under suspension. If there's no objections, something will be coming up under new business.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese regarding the Chelsea Electricity Choice Program receiving approval. Dear councilors, I am pleased to inform that the city of Chelsea has received approval from the Massachusetts Department of Utilities for its electricity aggregation program, Chelsea Electricity Choice, on December 27, 2023. Chelsea Electricity Choice is a-
Madam President, I move to waive the rest of the reading and accept and file the communication under suspension. If there's no objections, something will be coming up under new business.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to the next order of business.
We move on to second readings. We have a communication received from then-Council President Leo Robinson being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of $30,758 from General Stabilization Fund to the operating budget authorized from CIP fiscal year 2024 Public Works Department to provide supplemental funds for the replacement of a fire-damaged vehicle, WSD-3 utility vehicle.
I'd like to move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Taylor moves for a roll call vote. And Counselor Teshi second.
On the roll call vote, Counselor Tej.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenary Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Saniget. Counselor Jimenez Rivera is absent. Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Coopero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten members in favor, none opposed, one absent. The order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by then-Council President Robinson being read for the second time. Order that pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 30B, Subsection 12, the Chelsea City Council approves a five-year contract for the Fire Record Management System.
Move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote. No seconds are needed.
Counselor Tej.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega. Counselor Tenary Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Saniget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera is absent. Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Coopero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten members in favor, none opposed, one absent. The order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by then-Council President Robinson being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of $100,000 from General Stabilization Account to the semi-centennial celebration account.
I'll vote.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote.
Counselor Tej.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenary Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Saniget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera is absent. Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Coopero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten members in favor, none opposed, one absent. Order is adopted.
Thank you. On to the next order of business.
We move on to new business. We have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorize the transfer of $89,828 from Salary Reserve Account to FY '24 Salary Account to fund FY '24 Exempt Employee Cost of Living Adjustment. Such payment to be allocated by department in the following manner.
Madam President, I'd like to take all the financial orders that would be 24F '24 through 24F '31, with the clerk reading each one, but to group them together and move these to the Ways and Means Committee, and I'd like to speak on it briefly.
Chair recognizes Counselor Taylor.
So, I just wanted to say for, for the people at home, that we're now going to start referring all financial orders into committee before we move them on to second readings. So all of these financial orders will, will go to the newly-formed Ways and Means Committee, where, where, you know, they'll be vetted and discussed before they come back to this board for approval. So that's all I wanted to say, and we hand it back over to the clerk.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor.
So the, the orders being moved to second reading and Subcommittee on Ways and Means are as follows. In addition to the one I just read, we have order that pursuant to Section 4-3L-
Is the floor still open for the speaking of the last order?
What was that, Counselor?
Is the floor still open for the speaking of the last order?
Yes.
So, I'm a little confused. I know that I read, received the Subcommittee Conference, but we were talking about Ways and Means here. In previous years, we've been using a finance committee. I think we owe it to the public to inform them what happened here, why it was changed from one title to another. That's something we have in the Rules Committee. It should have been to the Rules Committee. Don't have really any objections of it, but I just want the public to know what we're talking about and how we're addressing these matters, because they usually go through the Finance Committee. And I understand now, this is the first time we're using the words Ways and Means. So I think we do owe the public an explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. So, this was a change in the last Rules Committee, which we've already approved. So this, this is, this has already been kind of brought up and discussed. So there is no more Finance Committee anymore. It's been changed, called Ways and Means, and that was under the last Rule Committee change, which we formally adopted the rules at the first inaugural meeting. So, so really, it's the same, it's basically the same thing, just with a different name. And, and the difference is, is that all financial orders will go through Subcommittee before they come back to this board. And there'll be a committee report with, with, and I think we're going to be doing this with all the committees, so that this council can exercise its proper oversight of city government. So that's, that's the explanation. If anybody has any questions later, feel free to call me.
Okay, moving on.
The orders are as follows. Order that pursuant to Section 4-3L of the Chelsea City Charter, the Chelsea City Council approves the cost items set forth in the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with AFSCME Local 708 memorialized in the memorandum of agreement for fiscal years '24 to '26 ratified December 15, 2023. We have 24F '27, Chelsea City Council ordered by this vote formally accepting the Nature Conservancy's dedication of $215,000 to the city of Chelsea and authorizing the city manager to direct the funding to Mill Creek Restoration Program, including but not limited to the new park at 88 Clinton Street. We have 24F '27, an order that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20, the sum of $149,837 representing unexpended portion of the $756,000 appropriated under FY '2017 for early learning center roof replacement shall be transferred for building improvements to the CHS cafeteria project. 24F '28, order that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20, the sum of $345,860 representing the unexpended portion appropriated under FY '21 Capital Improvement Plan shall be transferred to FY '24 Chelsea High School Cafeteria Renovation Project. FY '24F '29, order that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of General Law, the sum of $175,000 appropriated under FY '20, FY '2018 Capital Improvement Plan shall be transferred to FY '24 Cafeteria Renovation Project. 24F '30, that in accordance with Chapter 40, Section 20 of General Laws, the sum of $1,500,000 appropriated under FY '22 Capital Improvement Plan shall be transferred to fiscal year '24 Chelsea High School Cafeteria Renovation Project. And 24F '31, order that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of $495,000 from School Stabilization Account to fiscal year 2024 Chelsea High School Cafeteria Renovation Project. All of those orders have been moved to a second reading and moved to Subcommittee on Ways and Means. We move on to an order introduced by Counselor Robinson. Order that the Chelsea City Council President provide an update to the City Council as to the status of the finalists selected by the City Council and School Committee for appointment to the Northeast Metro Regional Vocational School Committee.
I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on the adoption, if I can speak on it.
Chair recognizes Counselor Robinson.
We've attempted several times now to reach out to the person that we voted for to represent us up at Northeast Vocational School, and our hope was that they would be able to attend the November, November, December meeting. That hasn't happened, and we're getting ready, we're in July and January. We're going to be having another meeting in January, and we still don't have a representative. So I think as a body, we need to take a look at what our next steps need to be.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Moving on.
Counselor Robinson requested roll call vote. A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tej.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Tenary Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Saniget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera is absent. Counselor DeJesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Coopero. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten members in favor, zero opposed, one absent. The order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Coopero. Order that a meeting of the Subcommittee on Inspection Services be held with the Director of Inspection Services and the city solicitor to discuss enforcement issues at various properties in Chelsea.
Adopt under suspension. If there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Chair recognizes Counselor Coopero.
Lately, gets a lot of complaints from these landlords that are within our city. They get fined, but the, let me put it in an easy way. They get fined, but they still do the same thing. So it doesn't matter if you fine them or not. So I want to find out exactly to a Subcommittee, what can the city do? Can we enforce, have a better enforcement system that we already have in place, so these people won't take advantage of the poor renters that they rent to? I know a few corporations that own properties in our city and do that. And I feel sad for the poor people that can't defend themselves. They have to come to us. We are the protectors of their rights. So I want to make sure that we do the right thing by them, that these landlords that are rented to these people and they're making them live in bad situations or bad apartments, get fined. And when they get fined, they pay. And they pay through their nose. So that way, they will treat the people that they rent much better than the way they do now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, moving on.
We have an order introduced by Counselor Coopero. Order that a meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference be held to discuss a proposed home rule petition to establish a means-tested senior property tax exemption program.
I'd like for man to just take a roll call vote and send it to them to decide, because we really can't make a difference. They're the ones that decide what we can do on this home rule petition or not.
Chair recognizes that Counselor Coopero would like to move forward with a roll call vote.
How about you?
Counselor Robinson objects.
We'll take a roll call vote. Is objection? With the whole rule, man, you say we want to make a better matter?
So the motion on the floor from Counsel Robin- well, Counselor Coopero made a motion to amend to drop Subcommittee on Conference and just adopt by roll call vote. Counselor Robinson objects to the motion requesting roll call, and Counselor Coopero is requesting a roll call vote on the proposal.
What's he amended?
Okay, I'll take, we'll send it to Subcommittee. They really ain't going to make a difference. It's going to come back out the same way, because we can't make a difference. But we'll send it to Subcommittee.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Counselor. So do you wish to put in a different motion? Do you wish to put in a motion to send it?
You want me to, can I speak on it? Okay. I'm going to speak on it. This is a way, we cannot make a difference. This City Council cannot make a difference. They can object all they want. It doesn't make a difference, because we can't enforce this law. This law can only be enforced through the legislative body of the state. We cannot. We can only send it to them. So it's up to them if they want to. I believe myself that we should be the, I don't know, we should, maybe we should be an example for the rest of the state. We give tiffs, which a tiff is, we give tax-deferred to big business. For 30 years, their taxes don't increase. So why can't you do that for an old guy that's 65 years old? He's probably not going to live 30 years, or whatever it is. They're bigger investment. They are the biggest stakeholders in this city. They live here. So an old man or an old woman or anybody that's a senior that lives in his own house, it just applies to people that live in their own house. It's not businesses. It's people that live in their house. So why can't they, in return, get the same thing that we do for big business? It doesn't cost anything. So if big business is allowed, I believe a senior should be allowed too, because they shouldn't have to worry about being kicked out of their house because they cannot pay the taxes.
Thank you, Counselor. Do you wish then to put in a motion to send it to a Subcommittee?
Yes, we'll send it to Subcommittee. That's, but this is what it, this is all about. It's to try to make a better life for the old seniors that have paid their dues.
Thank you.
If you do it for big business, do it for the old people. Anybody that objects to that has an issue.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Taylor.
So, I'll support this going to Subcommittee. I think that whenever a poor community like Chelsea needs to look at mitigation factors with all kinds of rising costs for our residents, you know, I, I don't think it's a bad idea to look at it. Counselor, the Counselor's right that we can't do it on our own, but we can certainly discuss exactly what the home rule petition will be, and ways or strategies in order to get it through the legislature with our, with our delegation if we so decide to go that way. You know, I'm generally always in favor of a Subcommittee, because this council needs to spend more time discussing the issues of the city and, and, and trying to reach a consensus on these matters. So I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business, public announcement. Next order of business, public announcements. Chair recognizes Counselor Robinson.
Well, I'm glad that it's going to go to committee. I think sometime we need to step back and do our homework a little bit. If we go this route and do a discount, who is going to pay for it?
She can give it to you.
Counselor?
Other home, other homeowners and condo owners will pick up the slack for whatever discount that seniors get. That's my opinion, you are entitled to your opinion, okay?
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to the next order of business, public announcements. Does anyone wish to speak?
Well, I already stated, but I'll state it again. Again, this week, next week, we'll be celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King Junior's birthday, someone that we are proud of and someone we historically look to for hope and inspiration. So Max, and that if you're not doing anything, the CBC, Chelsea Black Community will be hosting an annual event. You can go out, it starts at nine-thirty at the high school, and it should be a great time. If you're not in Chelsea and you're in Everett, you can do it at the Conley Center, where we'll be hosting, my church will be hosting our annual event at the same time, at nine o'clock, so you have some opportunity to go out, not only to celebrate and bring awareness to the birthday and the work that he did, but also it is an opportunity to work with the beloved cities afterwards to do some community support, community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
She told me.
Chair recognizes Counselor Saniget.
Wanted to say that it's actually not at the high school, it's at the Clark Ave, Morris Siegel Clark Ave Middle School, and it's also a day of service, so they're asking if people can, that they make donations. The requested donations are warm clothing, gloves, coats for males and females, toiletries, towels, blankets, hats, and those will be collected during the program. And it starts at nine-thirty for breakfast, the program at ten, and community service at twelve P. M.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor recognizes Counselor, Counselor Recupero.
Here's my first public announcement. You can go get salt, and it's the mineral if you wish to get salt, it's there. That's the first one. And the next one is that your mattresses, if you don't get them picked up, they're thrown all over the place, I see many of them all over the place. You can pick them up on, what is it, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and, but if you call them and they don't come to get them, you call DPW, and DPW will come and take them off the streets. So from now on, if you have a problem that your mattress can't, it's not picked up, you just call DPW, and they will come and pick them up. So they shouldn't be an issue with throwing mattresses in the streets anymore.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Taylor.
So I just would also like to remind everyone to please renew your parking stickers now, okay? So we don't run into huge lines in front of the clerk's office. You can, you can do it online, go to the Chelsea City website at chelseyma.com for more information. Please do it. These guys only have so many people in the office, and time's running out, so please renew your parking sticker. Thank you.
All right. Any moment of silence?
So last week, this past weekend, we did a funeral service for one of Chelsea's leaders, a former leader, Richie Voak, it's great service, person that put a lot of tears, blood, sweat into our community, not only him, but his grandfather and father and, you know, ancestors before them, so just want to have a moment of silence for that family also.
A moment of silence for Ray DeLevy. He just passed away, and he was a good, good person. His wife worked in City Hall. His son is the superintendent of Melrose now, and he just passed, he was a very good person, and I'd like to remember him too.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Robinson.
Isaiah Alcevado passed away.
All right, all rise.
Just a quick note on Richie Voak, was responsible for getting us all the money for all the new schools.